I just don't know that you're gonna have a big turnout and I hope.
So the spouses and the children are going to be covered next to your January, they'll be covered? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying right now on this, I don't know that you'll have a lot of them that will jump up and.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I was here today under the assumption that we were ensuring the spouses and.
Don't have to worry about making money not being covered.
No, no, we already agreed, you know, we've already agreed we're gonna go forward with next year, but I mean past that, there's no guarantee. But what I'm saying is, right now if they come here and Jay's got four kids and they're already covered, you know, how are you gonna convince Jay to sign up for them four kids because he's gonna say it's already paid, I'm not worried about it, move on.
And see, in like, in my situation, I've gotten like an eighteen hundred dollar oxygen thing every month. It doesn't cost me that much now because those cover, but if it went, we're not gonna be covered just except for Medicare.
Right.
And they're not gonna cover them.
Yeah.
So, that was, that was an actual point blank question I was asking.
Well, I'm interested in questions, I was still thinking this other term, but I'm just, I'm just don't know how many you're gonna get interested, honestly.
Yeah, and then again, that, you.
When I thought we were looking at changing the insurance, you know, that's different because we're paying the bills, we gotta figure out a way to fund this and it's huge and it's monstrous and I don't think the employees have a clue what it costs just on insurance, much less to, you know, they think their paycheck's the biggest thing, I'm like, our insurance and our matching stuff, we spend more on that than we do your paycheck.
Is that something that you discussed this a couple of times, but is the option to move the employees to, you know, a sixty percent employer contribution for the spouses and dependents, is that something you all are tabling? Because that is where we are gonna help you, that's where they're gonna not have a choice.
Well, in the future, but like I said, for next year, we've done said we're gonna take care of this, but past next year, which I got off of this year, I did not refile, so start in January, you'll have a different guy sitting here. His opinion may be totally different, but the following year, if money stays where it is now, I don't know how they're gonna pull this off.
Right.
You know, I, and at that point, I think, yeah, at that point, I think y'all could come in and be very successful. You know, if suddenly spouses are having to pay half their insurance, or, or like I said, even I even thought of before about the employee plus one, where, where like Donna just has a husband at home, she could cover him, where.
Cover sixty-five.
Yeah, where like, yeah, you know, that, but I mean, for like, me with three kids at home, you know, I'd be looking for coverage.
Right.
Go ahead, Dawn.
Okay, so, they come and talk to people, some of them sign up, they take them off the payrolls. Does the county pick up the spouse and child with the state company?
Yes, yes, yes.
That's what I couldn't, I was coming in, lost him on the way, okay. So the county's still paying for it either way?
Yeah, the county's paying for it either way, but this would be a lot like Aflac, it'd be your decision whether you wanna do, do something with them or not.
Now would be where the sale would come in, like as far on our end, selling people, see, we wanna keep the county paying for your coverage as long as possible. They keep talking to you guys, the money's gonna run out, it's gonna run out, it's gonna run out. So this is an option, we have to present it to you as an option, but if you take this as an option, what it's doing is it's allowing the county to cover you longer. So your projection numbers is going to last longer, so your option is basically, you wanna stay where you are and, and not be covered.
Because I gotta know all of them, it's still not guaranteed, so we're.
Right, right, but what we're doing is letting them know, look.
Anybody who says it's gonna help, it's gonna shift towards that, but getting, a lot of times your employees, they, you understand that because you're in business dealing with this every day. We understand it because we're the one that's gotta make the budget, and when I came into office, the county's so broke, we robbed every single budget just to balance the budget. We was working on projected income even, where in the last six years, money's not been such a huge issue, so I really get that, but a lot of them, you start talking to that, they.
Their eyes are gonna glaze over.
Yes, yes, yes.
I already know that, yeah, so that's why I think that Erin will probably be able to help a few, it's gonna be a small percentage, whatever she does, and that's great for the county, but she's not gonna sell it to them on the fact that she's saving the county money because they don't care. Maybe some of them do, but at the same time, what we're talking about is increasing their benefits, providing even better coverage, and probably in a small beta program for the one day when you all do have to do some kind of employee contribution split, so.
They don't care when their paycheck starts getting cheaper, you know that.
Well, exactly.
Yeah, but totally see that they know.
They have no, like you said, we've already established, they have.
I've been talking to my employees just nonstop lately because our money is pumped in so fast, I'm like, guys, we can't just run and grab this anymore, things are changing now, and sometimes I'm, sometimes thinking, you know, I'm like, is anybody listening?
It's more than thirty percent.
Yeah.
And then on your revenue, it's more.
Yeah, yeah. It is, which I've done several large projects that's contributed to that, but still, that money's not coming in to hardly cover our decent people right now, so.
It'll for sure, I agree though, it'll be an approach, it'll, you know.
I just had a truck driver retire and I didn't replace him due to money, not hiring anyone, so.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's something that, you know, from the small business perspective, you know, if we can come in and save you thirty percent on your bottom line for something like health insurance, I mean, you've got a business ownership, you just take thirty percent on anything. And we're talking about something that is so important and the costs are going to improve, it's, it's a very easy situation for us to come in and be successful, but when you take the cost of the medic, of the, of the insurance out of the, out of the equation, that your employees, they don't see the value. It's gonna be only a small amount, but they'll see the value, where if you had went to an eighty-twenty split, where you're paying eighty percent of their, of their premiums and they are paying twenty percent, well, if I can save half of that twenty percent, now we're talking, they're gonna see the value in it. But, but right now, they're, they're, you know, they're being enabled, and, and that's great that you all are willing to do, like I said, that's a great thing, but, but we're not gonna see a paradigm shift here until that changes. And when that does change, then, then great, hopefully Erin's already up here shaking hands and she's got happy customers that are willing to, to bounce for her, to do commissioning, so. I knew it's worth a shot, girl.
Swing for the fence.
Honestly, honestly, my, my goal, and I told you guys, you know, it's, I told you guys upfront, it hasn't, I wasn't thinking about money, nothing. My mom tells me that you guys are cutting budgets and my first thought is my family. And I think, well, everybody else is thinking, because it's emotional, you know? I wanna make sure everybody's covered.
Well, just set you all day up and you can have this room, and if you wanna come out to some of the shops to see the guys, you're welcome to do that, and like I said, I just wanna shoot that out there to be honest with you, I don't see a huge changeover because they're not gonna wanna see that. You probably walk up and down grain and get a lot more customers than.
Yeah, right.
No, it's. I'm glad, I'm glad we had a meeting because I was kinda wondering what, how we were gonna do it, and what kinda what the angle was, and I was under the assumption that you guys were gonna just stop paying for coverage for spouses and dependents, and so in that case.
So would I, yeah, so would I.
Well, and well, we would probably, you know, I probably said that because I talked to you and I told you that's coming.
Yeah.
So when I said that, I meant that is coming, I did not mean right now, so I'm sorry for that, that's probably me that caused that misunderstanding, but down the road, and I almost am willing to bet that it'll be the very next year, it is coming. They're, they're gonna be cut to a percentage, or maybe the plus one, or I mean, there's, there's three or four different scenarios, I've came over just in my own studies of what we can do, because I don't wanna cut this benefit from the, but I know money wise, it's, it's coming, there's nothing we can do about.
If we can observe as many people as possible right off the bat and extend that as long as possible, that's what we need to do.
Well, if you get ten guys enrolled in this, when that does happen, that gets you the foot in the door for.
Exactly, yeah, that's exactly right, so those ten.
Yeah.
Those ten are gonna be.
Matt?
Because he was perfectly healthy until boom, big major thing.
Yeah, that's, see, that's, that's the big thing, you know, like, you don't know, and you have someone in like that, and then it costs, it costs a lot of money, and then it's gonna.
Well, I, I had a twenty-three-year-old realtor up in Oklahoma City, a hoity-toity guy, drives a nice car, leases a BMW, twenty-three years old, has a great job, set appointment with me, you know, I went to go meet with him, he went to lunch with grandma, you know, moved around for a couple of days, he got a phone call from his brother, he had a stroke. You know, twenty-three years old and he's gonna be in the hospital for the end of the year, I can't help him at that point, he needed to have coverage during an open enrollment period, or he needed to be able to come onto my plan without an open enrollment period, and, and he doesn't have, you know, he won't have coverage. They can get coverage for the things that are happening going on right now, but you can't cover that stroke damage, right?
Well, I don't see no problem using this room any day other than Monday mornings, we have commissioner meetings, so.
I'll be all right, maybe you can use it Monday mornings.
Companies and stuff that they're gonna do, that they're going to pay well deduct this because that will have to have its own.
Sure.
You know, right now, Aflac covers that for us with Health Choice, where they sign, that means it'll be taken out of their picture.
And we'll get the signups and we'll come and we'll figure out the money, Shane, and I'll get, I mean, that's, that's gonna be something that, you know, we gotta get authorization on, we all, before we do the process, but she's, she can collect eight or ten in a day, if that's the number, final number, then we'll come to you and say, we need authorization, you pay for these, and we'll get a, we'll have someone from the home office, uh, notify something, so. We're very organized on that part, it's just the, the chaos and confusion is literally hurting everybody in the one room, sitting them down and saying, okay, here's what we're gonna do, here are your options, you know, so that's all part of, we're good at that, so.
I'm gonna push you down to the districts and they just want me to be in there and everything, or the district meeting and then they can.
That's, that's up to you guys' schedule, I don't have a problem hanging next to my time clock that you're gonna be, I, that's why they do the Aflac, when they come, they're gonna be here a certain time, certain day, and if you want it, there you are, if you don't, you know, it's your graders awaiting, so. Well, we didn't expect that many guys to have kids too.
No.
People when we did this, yeah, so I think some of them, they shouldn't claim. They've never, never.
That's a whole other meeting.
They've never paid child support or anything else, yeah, or somebody claimed them.
They just came out of work.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you all. Is there anything else I can be of assistance?
I think we're good, just wherever you pick your day, let us know and we'll get set up.
If you want me to go over, like what I went over with them, I'm gonna have to do that. I'm gonna be here all day, today, and I'll be coming back, um, possibly later in the week, I know I'll be here next week, so, whatever's good with your schedule, if you, if you'd like to do that, that's, that's good. At any time.
I have a budget maker here today, so.
You have a what?
Our budget maker is here today, so that'll be the only thing, the only thing to pull me out.
Okay, yeah. So what time, what time do you have that?
He's just here, I don't know when he'll.
Oh, so he'll just pop in.
Yeah. So, yeah, you can, you can sure just come over to the desk and that will be the only thing that should interrupt us, and I'm, there's a conference room there in my office.
Okay, thank you guys for your time, thank y'all.
It's nice meeting you guys.
You too.
Thanks.
Good to meet you.
Kelly's gonna shake her hand?
No, I'm not gonna shake her hand, bye, see you later.
God, birthday.
You too, thanks.
Come up front now, Kyle, stay back, I gotta leg it back.
There you go, protection of the chairs.
Oh, minutes, I gotta move up there.
I can't read it.
I tried to read it too, I don't like that, I don't know what this is.
I might get a card on them because I can't read this, first name, last name.
We can ask Erin.
This is gonna be real fun, the people will be reading check, they're gonna say, where's District Four, what's District Four?
Oh, yeah.
No, there's only three districts, three counties, that's the all three, no, no.
Three plus one.
District Four and the C is Toby Walker.
Well, everybody knows my phone number. I'm looking for the approval.
Second.
Who's the scripture?
I'll tell you, yeah, all right.
You're a church of struggle.
We live better, it's not what you want to.
It's a little burned. It's a little pretty bad.
I'm definitely a little late.
I didn't get it right good at all.
Kind of linebacker.
Yeah.
I was impressed that was pretty good.
Really?
Kay played pretty well until eight three.
Yeah. I have.
Just get Robert out for a couple of weeks, and I heard a little bit.
Sure. A little harsh play.
Seven and a half, seven and eight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We didn't read the Niskus, we didn't see Allen.
I couldn't, couldn't hear everything that Christ said, so I'm gonna go with the mustard.
I missed that one in my copy.
I thought better than what I thought, than better than what I expected, but there is no, you gotta play the whole game, they're, they're gonna play the whole game, there's no other official kid.
I'll be there Thursday through Thursday.
Don't turn me down. Yeah.
I would do it on a Tuesday.
Yeah, now, playing garden, first thing, we didn't look too good at all.
It got a little pretty good.
Well, we, young guys, six foot four guys, we got five foot nine trying to, you know, check, he's got some good size. Yeah, I'll be surprised if they.
Forty-five is a lot of people.
Well, we knew, I mean, they lost Cochran and Guthrie into which your tired backfield, lost Gillie and Grant and Hunter, three fourths of your line, then you lost your receiver and Badger, so you've lost seven out of eight starters, I mean.
You and Jake picked up there.
Right in the first game, you're going to do it or do it.
Yeah, I hate that on me too. Which I don't know, that Pond Creek, that's some decent, and they dropped off a little bit last year.
I think there'll be a lot of people because they're about to, some of their mind issues, and they're thinking about their stands and people because of it.
Yeah.
People wanna get a lift to the new field.
Yeah.
Should you go buy your seat?
No.
Yeah.
No. I don't ever stay in the stands anyways, I end up walking around and, staying in the stands, people surround you and watch stuff, so you gotta keep on the move so you can watch the angle a little. They do that when you're standing up, the only place they don't do it is if you're on the sideline, sometimes they'll do it then.
So there's a loud mouth in there that, you know, I gotta, I gotta get away from that.
Now.
It's time next season, you know, we can get you a seat.
Yeah.
Well, it's still complaining.
Be able to have a seat. I can't sit very long, I gotta circle cruising and probably end up on the opposite sideline even down a toe.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
I always stand on that side of the line if somebody can't.
Yeah.
I don't know if you lose your side.
Doesn't that look like those seats are very well, candy cat accessory?
They're not, but that's why they got their benches on the first three rows for people.
I still think that. Those people are hard.
I think they're selling more like two or nine, two hundred and forty. Over two hundred and forty.
Over two hundred and eighty. Yeah. Yeah, I think we got three seniors, two juniors, a retro sophomore and freshman, that would hurt you. Where Kate played at?
Uh, offensive played quarterback.
He might have, he might have had him at linebacker. Yeah, he played quarterback last year, but the year before they played a fullback, so I didn't know, they didn't move him back to fullback a little more, or. They do, Chase.
I think they had Chase as quarterback.
Yeah.
They had a quarterback and, uh, Kate, we might have been back there about that.
Yeah.
He's not got a. He doesn't have that arm either, he's.
No.
He can't be rolled out, put it right on that, right on the guy's hands, he's just gonna make the pass, but.
Yeah.
For a freshman to roll out and make a throw in the running, it'd be out.
Hope we move the linebacker now.
Should be able to throw the ball some, because, you know, those two little ball boys, one will play receiver at six-nine and then one will play tight end.
Two new kids?
Yeah. Paul, they, they're maybe super junior back in nineteen ninety-two, and a big kid, one-six-nine, one-six, probably a six-five.
Yeah, we lost something. That was the data where we are. Yeah.
We're in the sideline, it's, uh.
Was it called this morning?
It was on Friday.
They just get a player in football field. Yeah. Four straight years, that's pretty impressive.
It's a hard one.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen this year, but.
It's gonna happen too.
But I mean, four straight years and undefeated season itself is a confidence.
They don't really lose much. Two years?
Three. Lost three.
They even worked this team.
They lost two state semifinal games, a state championship game, and they won the state championship game. Same team twice.
It's not bad though.
No. Shoot, I would take it, that's what.
Thirty, thirty-one and three? No, forty-one and three. Well, I just thought it'd be a little less than that.
They only had a couple of games canceled.
Well, we're all the way there.
Then you had a couple playoff wins every year, every year they won at least two playoff games, four that one year, like ten per year, thirteen oh that year. Quite a career.
Should, they should make it to playoffs, I think so.
Yeah.
All you gotta do is get them a district plan. If you have a team, one guy that's gonna make it to playoffs.
It could happen.
But it will happen, usually it'll give you a good, uh, play place two.
So if they play at Washington, they will come, they'll go very deadly, they didn't post that much.
They play Ringwood. I think Ringwood's gonna be this year.
Oh, sure, good, I just don't think they're gonna be up to mend the last four years. But we got another round coming in a couple of years, I mean, last year's elementary and junior high both were undefeated, so wait till them four classes are freshman through senior. Right.
That was six, seven, eight of them, it was this year, went all four of them.
Yeah, yeah. You're three years away, you're out of that group.
They, when any group is in high school, I think certainly it's gonna be a, they get.
Yeah, they, they do, they do, but the grade school, the junior high both beat them alike, and the junior, or the grade school beat them pretty bad, junior high game was just a decent game, but grade school game got hung offside.
Are you helping the third, fourth graders?
Yeah.
Do you have a schedule yet?
Yeah, I sure do, I sure can.
Are you planning to look at any?
Yes.
I think that's all, too many states don't want Facebook.
I just don't see it. We got the entire third and fourth grade schedule, has every team that's in the league.
Was it because he signed Airborne?
It's on a B.
We're a little small. Fast. We're gonna be fast, we'll be real fast.
How many of these classes come in, so you have one, two tall kids?
Yeah.
But a lot of. Like the eighth grade class does not have a lot of size.
Joe Harper's not the only one with any size, or else, and then you jack.
Which one?
You have the classes like Noah, Leslie, Bryce Day.
Yeah.
Those guys aren't really big.
No, do you know they grow a lot this summer?
Fastly.
Yeah. It's been killed, got really tall in that class. Yeah. That's, yep, that's exactly right, but they, they said it's pretty good talent from top to bottom, that poor team. And then a couple of them, I don't even plan on playing next year, like, I don't know, I talked to him, he's, uh, he's not playing next year.
See if that, see if they hold it, uh.
Hold to their word. Yeah, he, I think he will because, uh, he's, uh, won't play this year so bad, so.
He'll be a good recall player.
Yeah, well, he's, he's a super talented basketball too, he's. All right, and then his mom, he, he's kind of want focus on basketball, which, if you're good, go for it, you can. He's real good. Yeah, other than that, in that class, there's.
I'm gonna close eyes.
I can must approve, second.
All in favor?
Let's go to the bank. I'm gonna show a whole handful down there.
One.
Yeah, sure, I'll sign them, that's right. District two. You know that class underneath that, you know, the seventh graders now, you know a lot of size.
And Blake and Kay.
And Ricky's just as big as light this year, he will improve.
Ricky's big leg.
Yeah.
I heard it.
They are doing, I'm pretty sure you're, I can, that's what I heard, yeah.
Really?
I thought they were working.
Really?
Yeah.
Actually, technically, they are, they're now, but they're a little on Flint Street.
All right, we got one more school guarding them, Duke gave it to Allen.
Yeah.
We're getting one school out in the building.
Great, sure, we're gonna, we go. I'm surprised to see, uh, see, uh, Tampa transfer up here.
Oh.
I'll have you there.
Honestly, while Ricky's really, really tough and good, I think he's closed a lot of gap between him and Lake. He's a little more physical and, you know, but he's seen stronger, he's more a little bit aggressive.
Did Lake grow any more this summer, did he throw it?
And Lake's a big kid.
I hope, so Ruston, Ruston's getting smaller, it's pretty good.
Yeah.
He can play in class.
Yeah.
Shouldn't want to say.
Oh, actually, you get that four group in there, you're on a.
Free drop first.
Just let, maybe.
Now Jared's up.
Jared, go. I'm gonna look at Cade and Lake, the same group. Hey, you're going quarterback.
Go one, quarterback, go one and linebacker, I guess.
Yeah, you could, but then, then you also got Ruston, that's a pretty good running back that, you know, hits a lot harder than his size and. Yeah. Pretty shifty and, I mean, you, you still got Ricky who's, like I said, it's. Yeah, you'll have, you'll have Pay Green, that Doolittle kid, he's a pretty tough running back.
I don't think it's, it's in the right catch. It's not quite, he's gotta go, just grow.
That's what we're pretty loaded backfield.
Ricky's a conus. Yeah, a conus, it'd be funny, somebody to be on the line.
Yeah.
How are they?
They're, they're. They all clean up.
They're not, they're definitely gonna. This year's, I suppose, is slow.
Yeah.
A little ball, but I think it's gonna be two or three downs, taking the first pass.
Yeah, and you know Ricky's playing in the line zone too, when you get that many crowded backfields, someone like him may move out for a tight end position and.
Ambus district.
You got Gabe playing tight end and.
Cause they said Gabe.
Yeah.
He's playing, he's in receiver.
Sure.
Russell's gonna play.
Well, Cole could play receiver, too, because he's got a lot of speed.
I said he's a six-nine kid, I knew he was gonna be a slaver.
Yeah.
Think that's nobody, right, any classy footballer's gonna be that tall, but.
No. Yeah, you're right. That group, the biggest thing is if you plug in about three linebackers.
Set ambus district then. Garber's gonna have, they're pretty tall as well. I didn't see a lot of.
I don't call really well, they're not cool. Oh, yeah.
He had no scrum ball that time, like, was, the backfield's not a good. Said that, they was probably just the only ones for, tied the whole ball, to run it through.
Yeah. Fresh. Who was playing running back starting?
I know, I know, I ain't got straight back there, son, like, I mean, Gillen, they just.
Yeah.
Maybe by the quarterback, I think Jared had a very good run.
Yeah. It's called, Moses County Sheriff's, I have to sign that one.
No, you don't sign, but we have to come in the meeting.
I lost the paper, where'd it go?
Oh.
I gave it to you. I like a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Go across the permits. In the concrete deal, on the delivery bridge district, yeah, District Two Bridge thirty-eight-three. I'm gonna make the motion to approve.
Jack.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution for District One, return the hourly pay schedules to the salary pay schedule.
I did not ask you, did you talk to them to affect this paper?
Yeah.
And they understand that there's not.
Yeah.
I make the motion to approve that, second. All in favor? Jay's like, sure. That's the.
Effective the next pay period, right? Yeah.
What was said, look at it.
Today's in the pay period.
Yeah. It'll be effective today. Today.
That's all it. They, they were thinking.
Now, you're not, not the one that you're gonna get paid for in the end of the month. Today's in the pay period.
They'll be effective today.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Now, the ones that I didn't pay for, end of the month, will still be.
That's the play, pay period that ended yesterday. And you know that group, maybe some of them younger kids playing online, cause like Colby and Grant both started on the line last year. Send their donation form for Cheryl Wagner, who donated forty hours of Matt Tucker.
Place, there's only two lines, so, so he will have to make it his own line.
Yeah, make his own line. I'm moving to approve, we'll change it. We're doing both online.
Right.
For you, as such, she's advised, you may be assigned up to all, I didn't remember that.
Person department.
Yep.
I'll second.
Um, Jen, for a second.
Oh. Jay's second. All in favor? Aye.
I'm lucky they gave you the, um.
Yes, we take care of Jay around here. Someone has to.
You don't tell them to talk about him behind his back, though.
No, I like to tell them to say, I mean, we and Jay like to be upfront.
Yeah.
All right. No one may like us, but we're honest.
Same, you know, we're sitting next to your stage and there's somebody good on it. We like to be upfront.
Jay, Jay, Jay.
The all for life.
Yeah, yeah.
The surplus is up on top and then the.
Right. I make a motion to surplus.
Thank you.
I'm staying. All in favor?
Aye.
The decorations are shriveled. Did that, sorry. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Disposal, yeah. I'm staying. All in favor?
Yeah.
How much tickets for the O U from Ohio State fans?
Oh, did you? Is there any unforeseen business?
Cool.
I make the motion adjourned.
Second.